Well, we have an agenda that's...
But Mr. Nicholson came in.
Yes, I know. Yes, Mr. Nicholson. Would you like a few minutes? We have a few minutes. Are you just here to...
Just pop it in. I said I was gonna start popping in.
Oh, good. Well, that's great. It's great to have you.
All right. Well, thank you.
I can put you on the list for streaming. You can just get in your office.
So do you wanna take a break until...
Paul, he wanted... Do we wanna talk about... What's he here to discuss now?
I think he was gonna just discuss what we...
Okay. Well, we'll wait a second. Paul, welcome. You have some...
I spoke with Pat a little bit about assessing, and I had seen Danny Silverman last night.
I'm here to get letters from towns on looking at this regionalized assessing issue. And so we're going through our DLTA process now. So we've got $150,000 there that we're looking to sort of allocate for certain regional issues. And one that we're looking at on the DLTA side would be centralized dispatch services, 911 services. And so, you know, you're involved in the C-MED process right now. Jim Merriman from Harwich is on the PSAP committee statewide. He's convening a group of town managers, town administrators to talk about that. We've talked to the state. They've encouraged us if we're gonna look at centralized dispatch that we do more than just fire, that we look at fire, police, and the sheriff. So I think it's... And if you look nationwide at efforts at regionalization, the 911 sort of PSAP options seem to be the low-hanging fruit. That's where they go first. And so I think it's something that we should go forward with, but there's also some potential state funding, state matching, or funding that might be available, 911 money. But that's gonna take time. And we have to spend the DLTA money within the calendar year. So I think that there's... That we're slowing down on that centralized dispatch piece, although I think there's a lot of momentum behind it. It's gonna happen, and it's hugely important. And then I see that the assessing piece has sort of hit some, you know, predictable concerns on the Assembly, and I think that, you know, has issues associated with it. So my suggestion would be that we sort of... That the commissioners consider maybe withdrawing that from consideration from the Assembly, letting the commission do the centralized assessing as a DLTA project so that we can get it going now. Because it also... The assessing issue is really fundamental to a lot of what we do, trying to get some uniform data sets from all these assessors which we don't now. And it informs our GIS process and a lot of what we do, our ability to write grants. But it also is an important component of this Open Cape project going forward. When we look at the kinds of data sets that are gonna be available, and whatever the centralized database, the regional database is gonna be, we can start with GIS as a fundamental component of cornerstone. But I think that assessing data has to be a big cornerstone of that. So I don't think we can wait for what's gonna happen up there. I don't wanna do that. I don't want it to get mired down into... You know, I wasn't in front of these numbers. I don't know what the nature of the questions were. But it seems like you came forward with the Office for Regional Coordination last year, and they said, "Well, we wanna hear about specific projects." Then you come forward with the specific projects, and they're like, "Well, have you talked to all the towns? Have you talked to the dog catchers?" You know, they're gonna... If the requirements are that specific that you actually have to do the work first in order to go up there for reimbursement, then we're way behind where we need to be on this issue. So we've gotta keep it moving forward. So my suggestion would be that we do it as a DLTA project, and we sort of swap. And you do... You take the regional 911 issue, which is much more consistent. I mean, because my concern for the county is that you're in the C-MED discussion now, and you've got skin in the game with like 50 grand that's out there. And you need to get something back for that, or they're just gonna sort of hit you up for that every year. So taking a look, you know, comprehensively at the 911 dispatch services and the C-MED and all of that might make more sense if you're gonna use supplemental appropriation process to fund those kind of studies. And we would take assessing in and be able to respond immediately to the towns that are desperate for something that's going, because we have to sort of put the RFP out there, scope it with the towns, you know, get a consultant to come in and look at what they're gonna take a look at. And if certain towns don't wanna participate in the regional assessing scope of services and the consulting services there, then they don't have to participate. But I can tell you, that's gonna be fewer than three towns, if at all. And, you know, my concern is that many times I talk to Assembly members about projects that are going on, or hear from Assembly members, and it's very different than what their boards of selectmen and their town councils are telling me directly. Last night I was in Wellfleet. It was the 12th board that I've been in front of since January 1st. And that's where... There's a real disconnect there. You just, you know, you talk to boards of selectmen, you get one point of view. You talk to some Assembly members, and you get another point of view. And the centralized... The regionalized assessing consultant is something that we can't wait on, because this may or may not be something that makes sense. But we're not gonna know until we bring somebody in with the expertise to find out. And so really, it's just a question of asking a lot of questions and collecting data and coming forward with some suggestions as to how we can get a more uniform data set out of the 15 towns. And in every step of the way, this is in property taxpayers' best interest, being able to sort of get this information up to DLR, get a response from the Department of Revenue on time. It just makes incredible sense, and it's frustrating when, A, we need the data, and, two, we know it's gonna save money to not be able to move as quickly as the towns are requesting us to do it.
I've already had two calls this morning on the assessing. And they're very upset, and I think it's a great way to go, and that we can get that going. And I do think that we will probably... It would be much easier for us to get the funding for the dispatch, to match the grants from the state and do a comprehensive look at it, because if we are going to do it, we have to involve everybody. And again, as you say, we're not sure if it's the best way to go, but we will have the answers, and we'll have all of the facts in front of us to make the decisions to go forward.
Yeah. I mean, we've tried to use... We used the DLTA funds last year, and we use them. And so we have three towns that are now looking at the possibility of having one police force that covers three towns. That's some fairly groundbreaking stuff. I read in the paper there was some criticism of the housing authority study that we did last year. And I just wanna make sure, under the DLTA funds, we put out a request to towns. Towns responded to that request for those funds. There was a particular town, in conjunction with three other towns on the Lower Outer Cape, that wanted to look at those services. We gave them the money. They put together the scope, and they hired the consultant. So that wasn't something that was led by us. So if there's a criticism of how that happened, it really should be directed towards the town that we gave the money to, and not necessarily towards the county. But the response to that was you had housing directors from around the Cape show up in this office...
That's exactly right.
Upset that their jobs were gonna be affected.
Absolutely.
You know, and that's not a reason not to do the study. I mean, I think we owe taxpayers the... We have a fiduciary responsibility to taxpayers to look at efficiencies wherever they are. We're not there to protect jobs. And my concern is especially given some of the... Where some of the concern of the assessing is coming from on the Assembly, that you have potentially town employees advocating to save the jobs of town employees.
Right.
And, you know, I don't wanna deal with that issue. There's an appearance of conflict up there, but, you know, I'm not the one who's gonna deal with that. I just wanna get the work done. So I think we should just use the DLTA money to move forward.
Yeah. I mean, it was... Go ahead. I'm sorry.
But I think... I'm not sure you actually said this, but with the C-MED and the PSAP and all of that, there's an issue about state funds that if you use the DLTA funds, then it requires the fire chief to use those funds before they use grant funds if they might apply. Is that the idea, or...
No.
Tell me, what comes first? If there's a combination of funds...
Yeah. When you combine funds, sometimes state funds can... They don't want you matching state funds with state funds.
Okay.
But, you know, I think we can get around that. We've already checked with the state on the DLTA one. The only thing the state said to us is that we would not be in favor of using these funds for just fire services only, that we wanna look at the complete dispatch arena, which includes police, fire, and the sheriff. Now, we've had conversations with fire chiefs, and they suggest that the dispatch services of fire and police are really radically different entities and probably shouldn't be combined. And... But again, the consulting services and looking for that is to answer those questions, and they may absolutely be right. They certainly know a lot more about it than I do. But we have an obligation to ask the... To look comprehensively and ask those questions and look for efficiencies on both sides going forward. And that's what we wanna do with the dispatch. That's what we wanna do with the assessing information.
So it makes more sense to use the DLTA funds for the assessing?
I think so.
And get that done, because those funds are gonna run out.
Well, we have to spend them by the end of the calendar year, and we have a high degree of interest from a number of municipalities in the region. And I think we wanna be responsive to the towns, and that's what we're trying to do.
You know, the president of the Barnstable... Chairman, whatever he's called, the Barnstable County Assessors Association was at the Assembly's meeting last week. And he was... They seemed very in favor of this whole concept. But they also asked to have someone meet... Like, they... I think they asked us to meet with them, the commissioners, because they wanted to know exactly how we were gonna put this together.
Yeah.
So I think that's something that needs to be done, is to meet with the assessors.
Yeah. Ann Reynolds, who runs the GIS department of the commission, has been meeting regularly with the Assessors Association. So we are in contact with them. This isn't something that they're gonna resist. This is something that's actually in their best long-term interest, as it is in the best long-term interest of the region. And it seems to be obvious to most. But, you know, it is a project that is so well-formed and so well-supported by so many people on the Cape that I think it probably is more appropriate as a DLTA project that we can complete by the end of the calendar year, incorporate into the Open Cape process, and move forward, whereas the fire dispatch, police dispatch, 911 services discussion is gonna be a little bit more complicated. It's gonna involve different funding streams, and so probably something that would be less likely to achieve by the end of the calendar year.
And, you know, you were stating that people were nervous about their jobs as far as the housing, or even, I'm sure, their assessors across the Cape. And the discussion with all of these towns, in any of these areas, is they're not out to fire their employees right now. This is all looked at as having an option available when their attrition, you know, when they are ready to move on from that job. Do they have to refill it, or can they now buy that service cheaper? And that has to be available to them. I mean, they're really seeing the need. Even the DOR has, you know, come forward and said that the towns aren't even getting their money fast enough, because they have to go through each town in their standard of doing things, which really slows down the process of the towns receiving their assessment from the state. So there are many different levels that we are losing on this, and if we don't pick it up. And the town manager of, you know, one of the major towns asked us to look into this, and it was that delegate that is really the person that's holding it up.
It has a lot of support out there. And, I mean, we just need to move forward. The delegation supports it. You know, most of the town managers, town administrators are on board looking at it. The assessors themselves...
Right.
Wanna take a look at it. So I don't really understand what the hesitation is. But what I'm more concerned about is, you know, there's a separation of powers issue here, too. I mean, you are the executive branch of county government, the Assembly of the legislative branch of government. When the legislature starts to demand those specifics in anticipation of appropriation, they're really encroaching on executive function, and I think you've gotta really be concerned about that. I know from being the Assistant Town Manager at Barnstable that if this... If the town council asks this question of the town manager based on the consulting money that he has in general reserves to go out and hire consultants to do different things like internal audits, the town manager would certainly make the same argument, that it is almost violating the charter because it encroaches so far into the executive function in order to do that. And especially when, you know, they sort of, as a body, rejected the Office for Regional Coordination last year, which is certainly something akin to the consulting funds that any town manager or town administrator has available to them. And they wanted more specific projects, and then you bring a specific project that has so much support by letter from the towns that they represent, from the delegation, that, you know, it seems to me there's something else going on up there, and this really isn't a meritorious project.
Absolutely.
And we just can't afford to slow it down because of that.
And even the Office of Regional Coordination, the inter-office of that, had numerous support. There were many towns that were in the audience, had written letters, and it fell on deaf ears.
John? I don't know. Did you wanna speak, John?
I just... I wanted just more clarification. When Matt, the gentleman from Yarmouth, I didn't know he was the president, but he...
Or chairman, whatever. Yeah.
But when he met and spoke at our public hearing, which I chaired last Wednesday, he said even the discrepancies between what the selectmen want and the assessors want are clear. So I think what the Assembly was doing was trying to get a closer focus on it, not to interrupt the project, but not to just throw money against... Protecting the taxpayers' money was our focus from everything that I get from all five members of my board. So I'm all for spending the public money in good order and wisely. And that was my only focus on it. But I wonder if you've had the opportunity to talk to the selectmen and their assessors and found out where they really wanna go with this? Because every town needs to save money. I think that's a given, and that's what this is gonna do. But at what level? The selectmen have a different agenda.
The selectmen look for information.
But if... And the selectmen, based on what I've talked to, is what the selectmen and the assessors, I think you're right, John. There is sort of a distance there, and they wanna figure out how to sort of put this together. So what they want is the county's support in helping them ask the question and get answers. And what the Assembly wants is the answers upfront before they'll okay the money to ask the question. And it's very counterintuitive and confusing to everyone.
Actually, we want to limit... We wanted to ask you to limit the focus to find out what they wanted, so we could spend our $15,000 wisely. Now, one person on that... In that public hearing on the Finance Committee was against the assessing.
But there was a discussion that we needed buy-in from all 15 towns, and we needed to check with all 15 towns.
No. It was to check with the association and find out where the focus should be on the money. And actually, we came to a conclusion. I think Commissioner Flynn asked it very specifically if they were against it, and not one person on that board said they were against it at all.
No, but they're delaying the process, making it happen. And, you know, to be honest, I...
It's a...
But, yeah, but, you know, and this is not directed at you, because you were not the one who was asking all the questions. But I felt like I was a department head coming to the town manager and saying, "I know you have money set aside for studies related to town operations." Let's put it that way. "And I have a project that I would like to get done, and this is what it is. And this is what I think I can achieve if I do this. But I need to hire a consultant in order to ask the right questions, get the information, so I know whether or not that this is a viable outcome. But my hypothesis is that it is, and I need to help this, my department, get the information." So I felt like I was a department head going to the executive, asking if that money could be appropriated for my use, as opposed to being the executive, saying to the legislature, "Look, here's the project. It fits within the scope of what our goals are for the county, and we would like you to approve this appropriation for this purpose." And this... No. It's kind of like... It isn't a goal that was newly articulated. It has certainly been under discussion for over a year as one of the areas that we can look at for regionalization. And I just thought the roles were reversed.
Yeah.
So that's kind of... That's just my impression.
I can't think of another scenario in municipal government where a board of selectmen has had to answer to town meeting floor to limit the scope of an RFP, or where the town council has requested the town manager in Barnstable the ability to limit the scope of an RFP. It just...
That's exactly it.
It doesn't happen. And really, what we wanna be able to do is solicit from the towns a level of interest and the scope of services that they want to look at. What I'm concerned about when I hear about the Assembly limiting the scope of review is that, "Oh, it's okay to look at the potential benefits to taxpayers at regionalized assessing, as long as you're not gonna take any jobs away from us." And that's sort of what I get going. And I don't think that that's a legitimate request, first of all.
That was my intent. I can find out.
No, this is... But it's also... You're... They're not really looking at... If you're... Sometimes you have to spend money to save money or make money. And this is money that has the... We believe the outcome will save all of the towns money in the long run. But until it's there, until it's gone forward, that cannot be established in how it can be best implemented.
Tell us me one more time, why can't we go through the regular budgetary process and put this on the budget as it should be, as opposed to drawing down precious reserves?
What I would like to do, and I am going to propose that we do, is that we put the Office of Inter... The Interoffice of Regional Coordination on again, so that this money is there for when these types of requests come en masse from the towns. We are able to respond without having to go another week, you know, put an ordinance in, two more weeks, maybe three weeks, four weeks before it can be heard, and then people can block something that is clearly desired by the towns. Everybody is asking, where, you know, what does the town want? Well, the towns are speaking up, and now we're not being able to respond. And it's really just because not everyone's listening to each other. There's this entity over here that has a certain idea about things, and they're not hearing the rest of the conversation that's going on.
So are we looking at...
Nice to see you.
Thanks.
My ride is here.
Your ride is here.
Oh, okay.
So we're looking at, you know, we are looking now at a decision today to kind of reverse this. It makes sense to me.
I would withdraw the DLTA funds, and I would, to the extent, I mean, John brings up a point about why you wouldn't go through the regular budgetary process. There's a timeliness issue, certainly with the assessing data, and there's money available. And this sort of dovetails with the initiative to sort of streamline services that are regional, that are in taxpayers' best interest. And it's part of the Open Cape Initiative, and we just got $40 million last week. It just doesn't make sense to start to break this into pieces at this point. And the dispatch seems to be more problematic as far as meeting some of the timelines associated with the DLTA money. So, and not to mention, I mean, you had a very sort of complicated budget this year that included having to plan for the sheriffs not going to the state, but that has happened. So there are resources available right now. I don't think you're drawing in any threatening way into reserves. And in fact, I think you're probably looking at some sort of potential surplus situation if the sheriff goes and it sort of floats around. So, you know, I think it's entirely appropriate to consider a supplemental budget. And, you know, considering how many supplemental budgets the county has dealt with in the past, and where some of that money has been spent, I think if we had the chance again, we would want us to be spending it on, you know, capital infrastructure projects and on consulting services that are gonna bring long-term savings to taxpayers and not maybe some of the decisions, short-term decisions we've made in the past.
But it's all the more reason why we should have a line item for regional services.
Absolutely.
And if that were the case... We all buy into the concept that we want to regionalize for efficiencies and any other number of reasons. But to try to accomplish that has been...
Well, it has been...
Not with the little negativity of the Assembly.
Well, it has been difficult, and, you know, you... It is right for the Assembly, as legislative body, to ask questions about what this office is, what kind of services they're gonna provide. But in every other town, the executive branch has access to consulting funds so that they can respond to things on a timely basis that come up during the year. And in none of those circumstances do the boards of selectmen have to respond to a request from town meeting to limit the scope of a particular RFP. And they certainly... Certainly doesn't happen in the town of Barnstable. I mean, it is an encroachment on executive function, and it has the tendency to sort of... Or at least a threat to sort of paralyze the executive function of the regional government if the legislature requires that level of specificity in anticipation.
Right. So on this, I would propose that we pull the ordinance from the Assembly and restructure it. Take a look at what it is, because there wasn't just the assessing in there.
Pull the ordinance and utilize the...
Yeah. The piece of the ordinance, and then we'll put out a new RFP for the DLTA next week. We can turn around and make an award in a very short period next week. We can turn around and make an award in a very short period of time, in a way that I think potentially answers some of the, the questions of the assembly, because we are going to be asking towns to respond. So they will be telling us what they think in response. And, and I think that's the appropriate use of the D L T A money. And the centralized dispatch study is going to be more complicated. It's going to require more parties at the table, more funding streams. So I think you may want to take some time, have the C M E D discussion, talk to the delegation a little bit, and figure out what the nature of this study one, is going to be going forward. And then you'd be able to present that separately as a supplemental appropriation to the assembly in more detail. And the fire chiefs and police chiefs, and perhaps the sheriff would also be there to support the effort at that point. And, you know, so I just think, given the nature of the body, and especially the nature of the way the body's been acting over the last two years, as it relates to some of these, this, this encroachment on executive function, you know, I think it might, it's just going to be cleaner. It'll be easier to get the work of the region done. It'll be easier to be responsive to towns
Right.
and taxpayers if we swap these two initiatives at this point.
Now, but wouldn't we have to pull the ordinance as it, as it is written and as it stands, and rewrite it with the dispatch proposal?
That's a question for the administrator. Maybe that you can put forward some amendment to that, have an amendment offered, where you just sort of take the 50,000 off the table. And, and then you can let the assembly know that you've got, that you've swapped this project with the D L T A funds, and that you'd be coming back to them for additional discussion about supplemental appropriation of funds centralized dispatch.
Okay. So the motion is to swap the funds?
The, the motion is to, yes, is to add an amendment, is to put an amendment on to the
To the ordinance.
To the ordinance, explaining
To amend the change in funding.
That there's going to be a change.
Okay. Is that your motion?
That is my motion.
And I'll second it?
All in favor?
That's all right. We get our, we get our roles mixed up every now and then.
It's okay, Bill.
Okay. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oppose, non-motion carries. We, I guess I have to take the minutes.
Yes, where is everyone?
Well, Bill is not here this morning. He's with the, he's at an R T A meeting, I believe. And so he just called, he was going to call in for a discussion we were supposed to have at 10:40. That didn't happen. So, and he's been delayed, so he won't be calling in. So it's just you and me.
Um
God help us all.
What else do you want to do?
Yeah. That's right. A motion to amend the ordinance.
Right. Our clerk of court has a comment.
Oh, you have a comment, by all means.
I just want to bring up to the commissioners, we had a discussion back with Mark, probably about a year or so ago. And I know that some of the space in the basement is now becoming free.
Right.
And the courts have a very great need for some lockup facilities. We are, we are violating, I can't remember how many laws right now.
You are on camera.
So regarding our lockup facilities. So I'm just wondering, because obviously, we need to go to a legislative body to get funds. And obviously, we need some time to do that. One, if space is going to become available, that, that's the first question, is there going to be space available? Two, would it, would we be able to, and this is on my request, that we'd be allowed to put in a request for that spot, because it's a dire need, not only for, it's for all the citizens of the county. And it's just, just, it's an awful situation, this lockup facility that we have out there. And right outside my office is that there's a stairway there that could be, probably not for a lot of money. I don't know, we have to look at it. But it could be done, the prisoners could be brought in right downstairs into a lockup facility. It's just that we have no place to hold juveniles, females, probate matter. I mean, I'm not here to speak to the probate court, because that's not my job. So I'm kind of, and I know that the lab has kind of moved out. So I'm just trying to bring it up as to when you guys might think that if it, if it does become available, if you're not going to use it, because I need to start going to the legislature. It's one of my top priorities. We have, we have to do something about it. I mean, for, for all of us, we're all elected officials. I think it's going to, it's a potential embarrassment to all of us in the long run.
If I, if I may, I have been given a tour of all of, all of which you speak of. And it is, it's, they need space. And we're, we're mixing up county functions with the functions of the law. And, you know, I've discussed this with various people, including Paul, just to talk about after we went through the jail. I, we've requested Mark to look at funds, to at least dismantle, if they're going to keep the facade in the center section of that building up there, the old jail, to at least dismantle the wings of it and figure out what we're going to do with that space. In the meantime, they are putting the lab in the old gym, which was, was a decision made before we were here. But that does need to be done. So you're looking for funds to rehab these, these areas?
I'm not looking, I'm not looking funds from you guys.
Okay, you're just
My, my, we, we're hoping, and of course, you know, it's your building. We're, we're, we're tenants here. But we need somewhere. And if something's going to come to a head, I obviously, from my position, I like, this is a great building, you guys are great landlords, I would like to stay here. But I'm coming to a crossroads
Oh, it's
where we got to do something. We either got to, we need more space to do something, or we need to go to another building. I don't want to go to another building. Maybe some of my other people in this complex may not have the same idea, but I don't want to move. But I do need space to hold people. So knowing that that's going, and, and it's a great, I think it's a great fit. I've talked to security. I think it's something that is doable from their perspective. But obviously, we need some commitment from the county that if that becomes available, that we'll have a chance to grab it. So, and then I can start going to the, to the, to the state legislature to get funds. Because we really need, you know, you know the space. We can, we just cannot keep on going the way we've been going for, since I've been here.
It's quite archaic. And actually, you should give Pat a tour.
I have another
I had the, the great opportunity to go with Judge Nickerson. So, you know, it, it was very detailed, to say the least. And, and I was under the impression that it was understood that once the lab got out of there, that this would be, you know, rehabbed and, and that that would become a holding facility. And there's also a back door where prison, you know, if there's a way that you can configure it where they can go in once. So they're not even coming in the front entrance with people.
Well, that's part of the problem we've had in the past, is that, as you know, right now, the van pulls up front, and they walk them through the court. The problem with that is that, you know, we have jurors, because we, again, we don't have a lot of space to put them. They see someone come, if they see a defendant coming in in handcuffs, and that defendant's on trial, we now just wasted that whole trial, because now they've seen the person in handcuffs by, by court rules and cases and stuff like that. They can't see that. So now, we spent all that money bringing everybody in, and now the case just went out to them. If we can bring them in the side before the jury even comes in here, they're downstairs in a lockup, and they're only brought up in an elevator to go right in there, there's very little contact. Now, as you know, I don't know if you've been here sometimes in the afternoon, it's like a chain game.
It's
And, and, and coming in in the morning.
And no matter how bad it is for those criminals, it's humiliating.
As formerly working for the district attorney in, in the county complex up here, and now at the commission, where the commission's the only county department that actually pays rent to a private individual, not to the county. And we just renegotiated a five-year lease, but we're a year into that, so we've only got four years left. I think there needs to be another attempt at a comprehensive sort of facilities plan for the county that allows the courts to be the courts and the county to be the county. And you have assets on the top of the hill. My concern is that you're, this ad hoc approach
Exactly.
to finding space, to solving the space issue, is ultimately not going to be the most efficient thing that you can do. And the final thing I would say on this, Open Cape, a significant component of that $40 million is to rehab the old B C I building up on top. So there's going to be additional space. And, you know, so we, I would, I think the commissioners should look at convening all the entities here, including the courts, the D A, the commission, on looking comprehensively at the county complex, and what the space needs are going to be in four years. Because, I mean, Scott's going to need that
And this all, this all
We had someone, I don't know, because we did this.
Right.
We had, we had some discussions way back when I first came in, back in 2001, two. And money was spent to look into that. And then it just poofed. It went somewhere. I think that we need to relook at that.
Well, that was
Because, you know, the D A, I know, I know Mr. O'Keefe is not happy with his situation. I know, all I know my counterparts in the district court, the probate court, we're not happy. And so
Scott, we discussed this during our budget discussions, that we needed to do this. And we needed to bring the people together, all, all the stakeholders in this, to actually look at what are we, where are we going to go from here? Now we have this vacant complex up here, and we need to. So we did put some money aside to do that. So I will, I have a meeting with Mark on Monday. And I'll go over this with him. And then we'll put something, we'll put a group of people together, people who really, you know, who have that, that stakeholders' interest in it, and get working on it. Invite the D A and you, and perhaps someone, one of the judges, or whoever might be willing to work on it. And, and you. And we can get this thing up and running.
But I mean, speak with Mark, because I mean, some of this
Oh, I will.
I mean, I don't know whether some of those plans, Paul, I don't know, I don't know how much you know about it.
Yeah.
But some of, how many of those plans are still feasible or not, I don't know. But we, there was a, we had a lot of meetings, and a lot of time went into it. And then it just kind of, for whatever reason, I don't know, people went off and did other things, or had other things came up. But I think it's a time again where we need to look at that.
Yeah, go ahead. The day that we took the tour of the old jail, about a month and a half ago, it's documented somewhere, Ed Maroni was with us, the exact date, I did speak to Mark about, number one, getting, looking into the stimulus funds, if not to build a building, to tear this one down, so that we can have a clean slate there and see what we can do. At the time you were talking about, there were the funds available. And, you know, we weren't here.
Right.
So, but I do think that it only makes sense. So I, I think that we had discussed this.
We had.
I think we have to get Mark on the, I think there's only another week or two left to apply for our funds, is there not? I mean, is there, there's a, a limit of when you can
It's April, I think.
Yeah, I mean, that might get
Yeah, I mean, it doesn't mean it's going to
The only thing that you could even be sort of shovel-ready for would be demolition project.
Right, exactly.
So, I mean, you need to sort of get into the design phase. But, you know, there's no reason why you can't sort of get into, talk about design and your ultimate plans, so that you could be opportunistic. Had you done that, you know, five, six years ago, you would have been in line for the stimulus package.
We'd all have a beautiful building. And, you know, you could hope. So, yes, your answer is yes.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
So long.
I just, this is one of the things that I know that's been, you know, but we all get busy, and you do stuff. And I just know that, you know,
No, that's
It's, it's one of those things that, for at least for me, is not going away.
Right. No, it's not. It's, it, and it's really is atrocious. So, and
But generally, anytime, anytime, just, just call me up, it'd be more than happy to be
I will.
Have you a lovely tour.
Okay, Scott, thank you. I will do that, definitely.
Alrighty.
Okay, thank you.
Are we going to hear something from you soon, or?
How are you, Scott?
Okay, very nice to see you. All right. You're on a good day now.
Okay.
I'm going to go. But the Martha's Vineyard Commission, executive director and the chair are going to be over at the commission 11:30. We're going to talk about some joint planning activities and some resources that we might be able to share back and forth. So either of you want to stop by?
That's good.
That's great.
Thank you. Well, I think that the discussion that we had planned for this morning regarding the license plate funds, I think we should postpone until next week.
Okay.
Because Bill isn't here. And I'm proposing that we have, make a policy decision regarding that, particularly based on the opinion that we've received from county council. And, and then the budget update, well, that was just in case Mark was here, but Mark and Maggie, we knew, could not be here this morning. So next week will be our presentation to the assembly. But I think we will probably want to meet earlier and take, and take up this. We will have a regular meeting anyway next week and take up the issue of the license plate.
But I, I think it would be good for us to even meet much earlier, because we haven't discussed our final
Definitely.
You know, how we're approaching the assembly and our statements. So I think that those, to have it maybe at 10 o'clock in the morning, if, or 11, would be a good thing, because it would give us time to really discuss it and be clear in what it is that we are presenting to the assembly, so that they're not confused and can go off into areas that will waste time.
Well, it's important for them to understand that our budget, budget is a strategic budget.
Yes.
And it was built on specific goals and objectives that we want to achieve in 2011. And we would like their support
Yes.
in the, in these, in being able to affect these goals.
And so that the county is here to do all the wonderful things that Mr. Mantle is discussing
That's right.
10 years from now. So we need to do these restructuring initiatives.
Okay. So is there a motion to adjourn?
There is a motion to pass the summary of
Oh, yes, we have to do that. Thank you. And I will second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's you.
Aye, aye.
Whoops. We just sort of kind of go in this tandem.
Sorry, your sunglasses just went
That's quite all right.
Wait a minute. So let's see.
We have to recess.
No. No, 10, 12. We pass this. I have to do the minutes while I do this.
This is very sad.
Pass the summary of actions. And that's it.
Yeah, we can send our
Is there anything else you would like to say?
No, no, not, not, not right at the moment.
Okay. Then there being no further business?
I make a motion to adjourn?
Second. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Two in favor, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.